So we'll start as soon as the last few trickle out, but what I did learn also is that the audio is back down in terms of recording. So whenever somebody does have to speak, speak audibly into the microphone and Judy's recorders from closed session are actually going to be capturing the content of this meeting. So I just ask that everyone does that. But now it seems like the good stuff that we deviate for has finally subsided. And so at this time, I would like to call for a motion to close the floor. Thank you Alderman Bessessi for the second. Is there any discussion on closing the floor? Seeing none, we will now move on to the next bit of reports, which first begins with the mayor's report. Not much to talk about in these last two weeks other than a snowy Halloween. I did have a couple residents contact me on October 31st asking if we were going to cancel. However, we had a lot of staff and resources already on schedule. The weather wasn't, you know, dangerously cold. The children actually liked the snow, I guess. So it was, it was good to see trick-or-treaters out and it was even better to make sure that rolling those police were still out about handing out candy to those kids that braved the elements. So I appreciate that. Are there any word reports for this evening? Moving right along then, we will move to the next point, which would have been opening the floor for public comment. However, there are zero names on the sign-in sheet. So that will bring us to pending ordinances. Moving on to the first ordinance number 19-46, approved tax levy for library, second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Alderman Diastis. Is there a second? Thank you Alderman Diastis. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessessi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Ordinance line item B, number 19-47, approved tax levy for the city, second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? So moved. Thank you Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Alderman Diastis. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Cannon.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion. Do we reduce the tax increase to zero?
There is a second. Is there any discussion to Alderman Cannon's second, uh, yeah, to Alderman Cannon's second? Alderman Sunaka?
Um, a question then for Alderman Diastis and Alderman Cannon on what they propose to fund the, um, let me pull this up on our packet. How do Alderman Diastis and Alderman Cannon intend to pay the three hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-eight dollar, uh, difference between what is owed for our pension liability and what we owe for our other services in the budget?
Alderman Cannon, do you have a response for your?
I just think we have some items in the, in the budget need to be cut.
The question was also posed to Alderman Diastis. Do you have anything?
I second it. I get it on the table.
Okay. So no response there. Thank you, Alderman Sunaka. Alderman Budmats?
I applaud their efforts and I, I get where they're coming from, but without concrete evidence as to what they wish to cut, it, it, this point seems, um, hollow. Um, and doesn't, and doesn't provide much good. So if we, if we can't decide what we're going to cut from the budget, then to just cut it arbitrarily and, and to underfund it only, um, is irresponsible as it doesn't leave us to take care of those items which are important, um, um, which we do not want to necessarily cut. So I'm all for cutting a budget if you want to cut it, but there was, there were meetings, we had a chance to do it. And so if we want to do it, then we, we should, if we're going to lower the tax levy to zero, then we, we need to identify which items it is that you choose not to fund. Um, by doing so, so that we can responsibly vote and say yes or no to those items rather than just underfund the budget.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Alderman Cannon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, um, we, this is my second bite. Um, uh, we could, uh, get rid of the five hundred thousand dollars we have set aside to buy the piece of property on the corner of, uh, what is that, uh, Hicks and Kirchhoff? That's five hundred thousand that most of us, I don't think, are excited about buying. That's five hundred grand right there. And I think as we go along in all of this, I think in the past, we've also concluded as a group that there's things we want to cut and not fund fully. So I think it would be no problem at all cutting three or four hundred thousand dollars out easily.
Manager Kromstock, you can interject if you want to highlight the, the differences in funds. Feel free to take the microphone.
So the item that you're talking about is not in the general fund. Specifically, these items that you're talking about, um, are from the general fund. So that three hundred and fifty thousand and fifty-eight, um, thousand would be funding into the general fund. So that half million that you're talking about is a completely different fund. So, um, and again, the land and building fund has its own issues.
Alderman Diastis, do you have your hand up?
Thank you. Um, just to pose a question, uh, could you take the three hundred and fifty out of reserves?
Manager Kromstock or Finance Director?
So we're already taking, um, items out of reserves in the twenty twenty budget to actually bring it down at this point in time. And that was from the discussions that we've had passed about after the CAFER was done. The other concern that I have is if you're arbitrarily just lowering a number for the twenty twenty-one budget, it's coming right back. So the question comes out to being, you're already putting pressure on the twenty twenty-one budget before we've even really started looking at it.
I think the more appropriate approach at this point, given the date and the chronology of the reading we're at, is working more diligently as the council. If you are serious about reducing what the tax levy is, working throughout this next year with staff to truly identify where operationally and capitally that we can make cuts or adjustments. But I think this today is, is not the time to pose this, uh, dr- drastic decision. That's all I have to say. Is there any further comments on this proposed amendment? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll on the proposed amendment to move the tax levy to zero?
Diastis.
No.
Sunaka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats?
I'm sorry, I'm confused about exactly what I'm voting on. Can you please repeat?
Yes, Alderman Cannon's proposal was to change the tax levy to zero. And if you, if that were, if there was confusion, I would request we recall the vote if there was confusion.
Okay, I'll start over. Diastis?
No.
Sunaka?
No.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
No.
O'Brien?
No.
Beniziano?
No.
Bessisi?
No.
That's six no's and one is, so it does fail as an amendment proposed. Now we move back to the original ordinance nineteen dash forty-seven, approved tax levy per city, second reading. So moved.
Second.
For the second, Alderman Beniziano, is there any discussion on this as it stands? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Sunaka?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessisi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
That's six in favor and one opposed. This motion is approved. Excuse me, this ordinance is approved. Um, moving on to the next ordinance, resolution number nineteen dash R dash nine seven, authorize contract with Sherman Mechanical to replace a water heater at City Hall. This item replaces the request to approve change order number one for the HVAC control system phase two for City Hall. It was postponed on September tenth and on September twenty-fourth, city council meetings. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sunaka. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessisi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sunaka?
Yes.
With seven in favor and nobody opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This brings us forward to the consent ordinances. The next item on the agenda, and the agenda consists of consent ordinances for first reading. There are three items, items D through F. Does any alderman wish to remove an item on the consent ordinances? Seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider all three ordinances in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion to consider the ordinances in for first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Thank you, Alderman Sunaka. The ordinance are as follows. Ordinance number nineteen dash zero zero, amend chapter six alcoholic beverage to allow the sale of beer in Growlers and Crawlers. Ordinance number nineteen dash zero zero, authorize the repeal of the sunset provision for the city's electric use tax. Ordinance number nineteen dash zero zero, amend chapter ten, amusements and entertainment. Code of ordinances to prohibit sweepstakes machines within the city of Rolling Meadows. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessisi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sunaka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Wonderful. With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. This rapidly brings us to new business and the new business consists of a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for November twelfth, twenty nineteen. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sunaka. Thank you for the second, Alderman Bessisi. Is there any discussion on the bills payment on warrant? Alderman Budmats?
Um, the only thing I wanted to comment is that, that, on the G two pay for the Gauntland Road construction, the, the, um, pay request shows that the project's sixty-eight percent complete, but the, um, but the date of completion, substantial completion was November the first. And I'm assuming that this bill is at least a month old, if, if not a little longer. And so I guess the only reason I bring it up is, is that I'm really hoping that we're on schedule and that we really are going to be moving into this, um, to this facility the first of December. Like we were told by the general contractor. And so, um, and we haven't, we had a, um, a report on the, the construction, where it's at in, in, in a while. So I'm just, I'm just noticing that this number is different than what I would hope it would have been. And I'm just hoping that it's delay in paperwork from the contractor and getting paid.
Thank you. Um, Manager Kromstock?
It is correct. It's a September, uh, date. So it is, um, back behind. So they are on schedule.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion for the bills on warrant? Wonderful. Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? And will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessisi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sunaka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
That leaves us with seven in favor and none opposed. So the warrant is approved. Moving on to consent resolutions, the items consist of six items H through M. Does any alderman wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Alderman Sunaka?
J and K.
J and K. Any others from any other alderman? Alderman Budmats?
No.
No. That now leaves us with three items, H, I, and M. The chair declares it in order for one motion to consider these three resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sunaka. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Budmats. First one up the bat here, H, resolution number nineteen dash R dash one one six, authorize purchase replacement computer equipment. Line item I, resolution number nineteen dash R dash one one seven, award contract with Sherman Mechanical for the replacement of six HVAC units located at thirty-nine hundred Bergnick Street Public Works facility. And M, resolution number nineteen dash R dash one two one, award contract for twenty nineteen valve fault and fire hydrant improvement. The question is, shall these three resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessisi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sunaka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
That leaves us with seven in favor and unopposed. Those resolutions are adopted. That'll circle us back to resolution J, number nineteen dash R dash one one eight, authorize the renewal of membership in the GIS consortium and award a three-year contract for professional services to municipal GIS partners and the GIS consortium service providers. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Bessisi. Uh, Alderman Sunaka, you could pull, uh, J, excuse me, on the microphone.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my question for staff is with regards to, um, comparing the costs for the MGP. Um, with, did we, did we compare cost of the MGP with any other GIS providers?
Alderman, uh, Director, uh, Horn, feel free.
Thank you. Uh, no, we did not.
Can you explain what benefits we have by, uh, pursuing this, pursuing this agreement for over three hundred thousand, almost four hundred thousand dollars for the next three years?
As, well, I, I can tell you as part of the consortium, uh, there's, uh, the number is not quite accurate. I believe there's now only thirty-six communities. Um, as part of that, we're able to, uh, share technology, share, um, um, infrastructure. Uh, all of our data is stored offsite in, uh, in displays, um, on their equipment. Uh, additionally, we are able to share, um, staffing costs. So, for example, uh, we currently, um, I believe two years ago made a, a decision at the council level to increase our staffing from two days a week to three days a week. Um, we can ebb and flow like that based on what our needs are as opposed to, um, employing a full-time GIS employee, uh, with the city. Um, uh, there, there are a, a variety of benefits related to that, primarily, uh, the sharing of information. As I was explaining to an alderman earlier, uh, if community X develops a, 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 a collector or, or some type of, uh, use for, um, the GIS, every other community benefits from that. We can all use that at no cost. We don't have to pay extra for that. We just get the use of that, what normally would be a proprietary, um, solution to something, so.
So then as a follow-up to that explanation, are we, we able to continue to be a member of the consortium without paying for the, the consulting fees of the MGP?
Well, we would be, we could be a member, but we wouldn't get any of the services. So, um, any of our support services, the, the primary costs associated with the, um, the contract in front of you or the agreement in front of you is for the staffing. Uh, three days a week for an employee, um, year round. So I don't know if the city manager has more to add regarding that.
Also, the, um, GIS consortium allows additional layers to be put in and some of those layers are, um, actually going into our, um, program. So they've been beneficial, but a lot of what we've been able to accomplish with the first contract and now what we're seeking are because of the consortium being so healthy and with some of the other pieces. So again, it goes to benefits of scale. It's also some of the other uses that we've been utilizing, not just in public works, but obviously public safety and some of the other pieces that you've been able to see. So it goes back to what a consortium really does is with, um, obviously there are those patents that have been around for a long time. Once the consortium was started from, uh, Park and Northwest, uh, Missamo Conference and some other groups. But we've been able to jump ahead, um, with some of those other benefits. But it's really one of those kind of things that it's a great outsourced, uh, group. They've been very, uh, good about when we brought them into IRF and some of our streamlining with some of the other pieces that they've seen. So that's just additional information and I know Rob has more.
Yeah, the only, only thing I would add is, um, uh, most of the GIS providers that we've experienced are typically engineering firms. The support they provide is very, very specific to public works and, and even more so specific to utility monitoring. It doesn't provide us a lot of the analytical information we use to develop our capital plans and things like that. Um, the other thing I would tell you is, um, a fairly large community to the east had a GIS department internally. They recently disbanded that and joined the consortium because it makes financial sense. So.
Thank you. Is there, Alderman Budmats?
So are we required to enter into a three-year agreement in order to receive this pricing? Is there a reason why we can't have a one-year agreement for the first year and then look at this again? Because I'm kind of uncomfortable with signing a three-year agreement when there's no competing prices and, and, and we have no idea. I, I, I just, I did a little bit of research and I, I see other towns that are spending considerably less. They're part of a consortium. And I, I'm assuming that they're getting considerably less, but I have no way of comparing anything to anything. And so it's been comfortable signing a three-year agreement or approve a three-year agreement without having something more to, to compare to.
I, I don't think that would be a problem. Uh, we could also, uh, do what we typically do on our municipal partnering initiative projects where that is we can put language in there that it's a three-year contract with annual renewals. So we would have to come back to the city council to renew it each year. That would be, the council would be in favor of that.
The only difference is the consortium typically asks for a three-year contract because of their staffing requests and staffing needs. So they're looking, um, long-term.
One second, I guess. So is there any other recommendation other than that, but which doesn't appear to work?
No, yeah, the city manager's done these contracts more than I have.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Sunaka?
Well, this is somewhat moot. I was going to suggest that if we can, um, if we can engage with the consortium to determine if we would be able to do a three, a three-year contract with an annual renewal, um, to amend this, this motion. Um, but I would like again confirmation from staff to determine if that's something that we can engage in or if it's. something that we can engage in, or if it's only three years is available through this consortium.
It's not, I wouldn't know that information off the top of my head, that, um, in the contract language. I, I would have to talk to the president, Tom, to see if they'd be willing. You, you have to remember the consortium is made up of thirty, I think now, uh, with the addition of one community, um, thirty-six or thirty-seven communities. They all are considered an equal vote in any decision, so it would have to go to a board meeting of the consortium and they would have to approve this, um, if this is a change in that language. It's, uh, MGP just provides the service. Uh, the terms of the service are usually determined by the consortium, which we hold one seat on, um, Superintendent Wenzel is the member that represents the city in that.
Seeing as how this would have to be taken to the consortium's board level to make decisions, at this point in time, is there opportunity for us to postpone this reading to a certain date, or are there extenuating factors that wouldn't allow for that?
I, I think we could postpone it to the next meeting since we have one coming up next week, uh, in two weeks.
Now, is that only going to allow the subject to be brought to their attention? Can they make, uh, determination at that time?
No, they won't be able to make a determination. I could, again, I, the only thing I could probably do is find out from, um, Tom, who is the president, um, if they would, uh, if that's something that he could make a decision on without the co- the board input.
Thank you, consortium.
And he could also tell us if there's any historical data that anybody's ever asked it and always said no. So we might have an answer of, hey, you can't do it three years or...
That's my question. How, you know, how, how on guard are we being with this request versus historical context? So is there anyone on this council who would be willing to ask for a motion to postpone to a later date?
I would postpone until November twenty-sixth with the understanding that staff would reach out to the appropriate, um, individuals at the consortium to determine an answer of whether or not we can break up the three-year commitment to a one-year annual renewal.
Is there a second to that motion, Alderman Budmats? Thank you. Is there any discussion on postponing that?
I did, uh, have a question. This is probably more for staff. Are we in a position to, let's say this goes forward, we get the answer to twenty-sixth, and they don't allow it. Comes back to us if for some reason it wouldn't be approved. It's possible that being this late in the year, we wouldn't have this type of service at all for twenty-twenty. If they come back to us and say, no, it's three years or nothing, which I'm sure they probably do for cost savings, that's why they spread it over three years, is just my experience or my guess working with consortiums, is they spread it over the three years. And they know we're locked in, so there'll always be thirty-six or thirty-seven entities participating. If it comes back and we do approve and say, no, let's look for one years, do we even have time to put an RFP out so we don't lose this service starting January one?
I, I had that conversation with city manager earlier. This, this would be a significant impact to the city's operation as a whole. Uh, it would be very hard to get that turned around. I would expect almost, I would expect about six months to look into an additional service.
I wasn't clear enough when I said, are there any extenuating circumstances that would not allow for a postponement to be on the table? And this is exactly that. If we postpone, we're essentially, potentially out of luck, or?
No, if, if we can postpone to provide the council with additional information, I think, um, what Alderman O'Brien was saying is if we postpone and it is not approved, then what would that, what would happen to, to this municipal operation? And that would be a significant impact if it wasn't approved. But I, I was saying it, it wouldn't impact our ability to get you that information and...
Of course. The information's great, but it, what's critical is our ability to go no-go with the consortium and the likelihood of negative feedback coming when we make the request. What is that likelihood to your best educated guess today so we can make the determination if we should pursue postponing for the informational feedback?
I, I would, I think the city manager has to weigh in on this because I, it would be a significant impact to the city operations as a whole.
Everything that's going on with IRP and some of the other pieces that we have, that we already have our twenty-twenty schedule that we're moving on, it would be quite significant with some of the other pieces, even with the, uh, website, um, revamped and that's going on. We have, um, done work on it. So we can get you an answer, but at the same point in time, I think even if we get an answer, we still need to move ahead with the consortium.
So I know we can't foresee what questions council's going to present, but I believe this is one of those critical moments where three years from now, should we proceed here, we make an indicator well in advance so these questions could be asked without being hastily forced into a direction so we don't sacrifice any operational qualities or luxuries.
Yep.
So with that, the, the request and motion to postpone has been out. If the council is no longer in that favor, I'm going to call the roll. Let's see what is, conduct that.
No, I, I would like to still postpone. I think we're putting the cart before the horse by saying that next, on the twenty-sixth, when we meet again, that we will vote not in favor of this, of this particular contract. If, that, those are the stakes before us. I think that it's worthwhile for staff to ask, especially if there is no historical, um, data that has demonstrated that a, a community has done this before. It's possible that we will be pioneers in this aspect and, and I also don't want us to disrupt service. So if we're able to have a one-year annual, um, a renewal, then that is beneficial for us. If after six months, staff is able to find something that would save costs. To Alderman Cannon's earlier comment about where can we find three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to prevent having a tax levy increase for our residents, this would be one of them. So for those reasons, I would like to, um, make that motion to postpone until November twenty-sixth.
And I agree with you. There was, and, and to my apologies, I wasn't saying that we shouldn't continue to fact-fine, but by postponing today, it puts us in a detrimental position when it comes back for a decision go-no-go on the twenty-sixth, that we could already be outside of a date that would keep us operationally sound with the consortium. And that's why for next, the third year, we would be able to react appropriately with enough time so we weren't forced into these decisions. And unfortunately, this is a three-year duration contract, not an annual. So if it were annual, it, it, the, the bruise wouldn't be so deep, right? But it, it is because it's a three-year contract. And so I would absolutely recommend and urge staff to find the information on this question, but if it's going to, if it's going to harm our operations, I would just recommend the council think about that before they vote to postpone. That's all. Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess a couple of questions I would ask is, um, Mr. City Manager, I believe we've been in this program for, is it three or four years already?
It's five.
Five, okay. Could you give us a general idea of what it's cost us per year up to this point, just ballpark? I know you don't have it exactly. I wouldn't expect you to have it in front of you, but is this a significant increase over what we've been paying?
No, it's roughly three percent, I think, if I can answer you. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's three percent is what it's really there.
And, and I, I believe two years ago, the city council made a conscious decision to increase, uh, the service one day, um, to assist with, uh, fire and police needs, um, related to the GIS. Uh, it was originally a, uh, two-day-per-week service, and now it's a three-day-per-week service. Um, it is a, um, technology that the entire city staff uses. So, um, the additional time needed, uh, to get some of those public safety, uh, needs covered, uh, were handled.
And the other, and the streamlining for the, uh, IRP system, it was about a database.
Yeah, the, they are, they are the primary, um, agency assisting us with developing a, a kind of a unified addressing system, which is what everything connects to. And it's, it's super critical to everything we're doing with the IRP.
Alderman Cannon?
So I, you know, when we decided to get in this program five years ago, I mean, the staff laid out a whole series of reasons why it was a good deal for the city, uh, for a number of different reasons that we've talked about already. So I don't, I don't see any reason to postpone it. I understand where people are coming from, but I think when we signed onto this program, we weren't getting on for a one-year deal. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
And Alderman Cannon, to clarify, last week I had a meeting with Manager Kromstock asking the exact question about the fees the city pays into our memberships, because I'm very curious and concerned about the value we receive from the monies we're paying in, and it's roughly thirty-seven thousand dollars to the organizations that we participate in. And that ranges from twenty-five-hundred dollars to almost thirteen thousand dollars in one extreme case. On average, fifty-five-hundred dollars per organization. And it's extremely important that we do find value in the organizations we participate in, or at least be able to make sure that staff has the bandwidth to attend these organization events, to pull back that expertise from them and apply it in the community. And so that's, the area is exactly where we should be looking to either reduce costs if there's no value, or concentrate our time and pull the value in so we can apply it and recognize the value.
I have to request clarification.
Yes.
So for, I have three questions then. So the first question is, do, can we, uh, still, if we were to postpone this, can we still join the consortium again for, uh, on the twenty-sixth, or is this a deadline that we're missing? And then the second question is, can we go forward and continue to be members of the consortium without purchasing the, uh, the consulting fees, which are a separate line item here in the packet?
So the first one, I could say consulting payments would be a no. Um, the other thing, and I think what we've heard is, um, what we have before us is a three-year agreement, and that's what we're trying to move on at this point in time. So any delay, any questions or anything else, um, has the potential to delay some other things that we have scheduled for twenty-twenty and with their personnel. But at the same point in time, I think that we've been very clear that, um, in a year or two, we're asking a lot of questions before we bring another contract to the city council on this item.
Thank you. So now we have to move on to making a vote on the postponing. If there's no further discussion from anyone who hasn't spoken. The clerk please call the roll on postponing for informational feedback to the GIS consortium.
Passassi?
No.
Diastis?
No.
Sunika?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
No.
Beniziano?
No.
With two in favor and five opposed, the postponing for information does not proceed. We're back to the original resolution, authorized renewal of membership. Is there further discussion on this? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis?
Yes.
Sunika?
No.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
No.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Passassi?
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, that resolution is adopted. This now brings us down to K, resolution number nineteen dash R dash one-one-nine, award a contract for, for professional engineering services for a proposed drainage study on the northwest industrial area. Is there such a motion to consider this resolution? So moved, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Thank you, Alderman Sunoka, for the second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sunoka, you pulled this.
Um, yes, I wanted to discuss, again, cost comparison between what's provided for, for us. Um, it looks like we are considering Christopher Burke Engineering, uh, for the services in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, but we don't necessarily have any proposals to compare it to. Um, and so my question is clarification from staff in, what is meant by going with this particular, um, with this particular, particular engineering service as financially proven for the city? Is that twenty thousand, two-hundred thousand, two million dollars of a difference than if we went with somebody else?
Based on my knowledge of the, uh, based on what I am aware of, that this, the, uh, city engineer's knowledge of this project and the data they've already collected based on their years of being involved in this drainage concern, um, we're, the city is not having to pay for the collection of that data. So, uh, another engineering firm would not have that historical information that they've been part of. In every drainage meeting, we've talked about this project and, and, and property owners they've met with and, and, and just a, a more intimate knowledge of the drainage issue. Um, it was staff's belief that it's not likely that another engineering firm would have been able to provide a competitive proposal. Certainly, uh, I'm not opposed to getting that. Um, as part of our discussions, uh, last year, uh, there are certain stormwater projects and certain road program projects that are, are generally going to fall under the city engineer's purview, and this, this was one of those projects based on their prior knowledge. So, um, certainly if the council's uncomfortable with the single proposal, I'd be more than happy to provide additional proposals. Uh, a- as far as your original question regarding the staffing time, would not take much time at all to, uh, it just, uh, a few meetings, depending on how many engineering firms we met with. So that, that's really all that would take.
As a follow-up, because I, I don't think I understand the flow of, of knowledge and information in this particular sector. Is there any reason why the data that was gathered already by the city engineer wouldn't be able to be shared to a, a third party that we would bring in?
Yes, some of the data is just knowledge, though. I mean, it's not like a spreadsheet or a, a GIS map or anything like that. Some of it's just the knowledge of what's happening in that area. It's, it's an area, it's a very unique area. Uh, as you noted from the, um, staff memo, it's even in the comprehensive plan as a drainage concern area. So it is a long-time drainage concern area that has been discussed since long before I was here. So, um, that, they have intimate knowledge of the properties and the issues that are occurring there beyond what I have. So that's why, really why we proposed it as, as the city, as city engineer drainage study. But as I said, I'd be happy, if the council chooses, I'd be happy to get additional proposals.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Alderman Passassi?
Is this, uh, by postponing or whatever, would this, uh... How much would this delay this project? Would it delay at all? Because I know for the last, I don't know, fifteen, sixteen years while I was on the planning zoning committee, um, we heard about this, this problem. I mean, it's come up so many times. I, I can't count how many times it's come up, so I just want to make sure. If we were to postpone, is there any detriment to the residents?
No, no negative impact. Uh, it, 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 it's no problem at all. It, it might take me, uh, a little time to do that. I'll have to prioritize that, that project, but I should be able to get at least two more engineers in within the next two weeks to at least get, um, a cost associated with it. Um, I don't think that will be a problem to do. If the council chooses, I'd be happy to do that.
So are you recommending to make an amendment to propose, or, um, or a motion to pro- postpone it?
I would like to, I would probably agree with Alderman Sunoka that I would like to know the difference between, um, I'm not saying I'm opposed to Christopher Burke, but, uh, it'd be nice to make a more informed decision on it. So, yes, I would make a motion to postpone until the first meeting in December. Does that give you enough time?
No, November twenty-sixth.
November twenty-sixth? Is that long enough? Okay, November twenty-sixth.
Seconded.
Thank you for the second, Alderman Sunoka. Is there any discussion on the postponing? Alderman O'Brien?
I, I, I understand that too. I just want to make sure, I mean, since it is going to be done by the next meeting, since it is allocated to come out of twenty-nineteen local road fund, that wouldn't be an impact, or we just shift that line out into twenty-twenty if it were to roll over until we sign the contract?
You are correct because per the audit, um, if we have not received those services, we can have paid twenty-nine.
Roll over. Okay. Any discussion on postponing? Seeing none, the question is, shall the, shall the postponing, um, resol- shall postponing the resolution be taken into consideration? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sunika?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Passassi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, so this meeting is, or this mo- this resolution is postponed. Goodness, I apologize. That now leaves us with resolution number nineteen dash R dash one-two-zero, award construction contract for Lot Five Drainage Improvement Project. Is there such a motion to consider this resolution? Alderman Budmats with the first. Is there a second? Alderman Ken, um, is there any conversation on this and discussion, Alderman Budmats? Is there any conversation on this and discussion, Alderman Budmets? You pulled it.
So, once again, we're in a situation where we receive two bids, or, I'm sorry, Baxter Woodman received two bids. And there's considerable difference between the bids, like almost, I don't know, close, at least sixty percent higher from one bid to the other, which makes me very concerned. And then when I read their, their further, it says the fourth company would be submitting a union price, which means it sounds like we're not paying prevailing wage for this. So, I, I'm, I'm very curious as to why we can't get three bids, especially when the first two are very different. I, I, it's, I don't mind seeing like five bids that are like ten percent apart. That makes me very comfortable. When I see them that this far apart, I'm thinking that there's some misunderstanding as to what people are bidding. And especially since in this case, the engineer is also acting, it appears, as the general contractor. And I thought we were going to be the general, or maybe I misunderstood, but we were trying to streamline this process. So, if the engineer is the general contractor as well, then I would really like to see more bids where it looks like there's a good understanding of the project and everybody's kind of in the same ballpark. So, I'm really uncomfortable with approving this because, I don't know, ninety-five thousand dollars is the greatest price in the world? Or if we're paying forty thousand too much, or maybe forty thousand too little? I'm, and so, I, I'm uncomfortable with this, and I probably vote no without seeing the third bid.
So, are you making?
So, I, what I guess I could do is I have a choice. I, I could ask that you come back to us, or, or Baxter Woodman, to provide us with more bids on this, so that we know that we're, that we're paying the right amount and we're getting the right, we're getting the right thing, seeing that the two bids that they provided us so far were so different. So, I'm, I'm willing to make a motion that we postpone this until we get a third viable bid from Baxter Woodman that shows that we're doing the responsible thing and that they're recommending we do the responsible thing.
Is there a second to Alderman Budmets' motion to postpone for a third viable bid to come back into play?
Seventh.
Thank you, Alderman Sunaika. Is there any discussion on postponing this resolution until a third item? Go ahead, Alderman O'Brien.
Do we know, I mean, I'm guessing Baxter Woodman did send out an RFP to a dozen? Was it just that two responded? I mean, are we up again? Like, that's my question. I would like to see a third one too, since it is such a disparate difference. But I'm wondering, are they going to go back out to the same twelve and only two or three may respond again?
They, really, they only went to four companies.
Okay.
Because it was a negotiated discussion as opposed to a RFP per se. The, the despair, the, the difference in the, in the pricing, I was not comfortable either, which is why you see draft on the proposal. The, I wanted more of a cubic yard cost, so we could acknowledge that there may be a savings, that the ninety-five thousand was a not-to-exceed. And that based on the quantity, there could be a savings, depending on what the contractor found on site. The, the primary issue is availability through the end of the year. And there are some companies that are unwilling to provide a, a non-pervailing wage price. For this project, we have determined that it does not require prevailing wage because it is considered maintenance. It is not construction. So, construction is when prevailing wage is required, not maintenance. So, for example, if we were to do tree trimming, that's not a prevailing wage item. So, so that's why there is a discrepancy in the cost. I agree with that. But a- again, we can provide that. It's my understanding that the contractor would be up against, up against the wall, if you will, to get the work done by the end of the year as it is. So, again, we can, we can certainly try to pursue more pricing. I would take the opportunity to ask them to provide the cost of the unit price cost, as I originally discussed, so we can have an actual dollar amount to associate to actual removed spoils. I, I would agree with that. That's why I had to put it in draft form, because I know this is a unique item that we brought to the council. So, I, I assume that there might be questions about it.
Thank you. Wonderful. Any further discussion on postponing for a third viable bid, Alderman Diastis?
Thank you. I too would like to see a third bid, but my question is, by postponing to November, I guess, twenty-sixth, is that going to, will, will we still be able to do this project this year? Or will we have to postpone it till next year? I mean, we want to get reaches of snow and frozen ground. So, can it still even be done this year? But I agree with Mr. O'Brien that I'd like to see a third bid.
Yeah, excuse me. We can, the work could get done by the end of the year. The snow is no impact on, they've surveyed where the concrete is exposed. That's the areas they're going to work on, and as they find the concrete, as they dig, that's how they're going to find the concrete. It is, we had a discussion with the city manager and finance director. There's a likelihood it wasn't going to be completed on time before the end of the year. So, similar to what we discussed with the earlier project, that would have just been rolled over into the twenty-twenty budget.
Thank you. Any further question from those who haven't spoken yet? So, that means shall the, shall the, shall the Resolution L be postponed until the next meeting of the twenty-sixth for a third viable bid? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is postponed until the next city council meeting. Well, this brings us right along to other business and reports. Under the mayor's appointments, a couple of weeks ago, I had a conversation with Alderman Sunaika, which I appreciated deeply. And she's interested and eager to participate on the ad hoc capital improvement committee. And as a result, I am eager to have her participation take place. And so with that, I would like for council's full approval when we go ahead and make the recommendation through vote. So, with that, would the clerk please call the roll on Laura's approval, Alderman Sunaika's approval?
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, thank you, Alderman Sunaika, for putting yourself out there on another committee.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And then I was also reached out to by a local business owner, Mike Reppey of Rep's Place. Very eager gentleman himself, very willing to get out into the community, also very willing to dig into the business community and help solve some larger issues there. He had asked if he could fulfill an opportunity and a gap on the economic development committee. And I was happy to acquiesce. I would like to see the same from the council here. So, when we call the, the roll with the clerk, I'd like to see that. Would the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Cannon. Budmets.
Yes.
Wonderful. With seven in favor, we will have Mr. Mike Reppey participate on the economic development committee. I do not have any proclamations. It appears there are, anything from the city clerk to report?
Nothing.
Well, that would now bring us to city staff reports. City staff, community items of interest. Manager Crumstock?
I'm going to slow it down a little bit, but a reminder that even with the snow out there, November fourth, early refuse set up again. So, please place your refuse to the curb no earlier than three P M. The day prior to pickup. With the snow, the leaves, and all the other pieces that have been falling down, a friendly reminder that residents should not dump or blow them into the street or down the sewers. The street in the city currently has two street sweepers working, one for public works and one for the private contractor. We also obviously have the snowplows out when the snow does come, so some of those leaves will dumb the way. A reminder, and you can see throughout the community, the library's put out signs from November fifteenth to November seventeen. The Friends of the Rolling Meadows Library will be doing a fall sale. That's pretty long, pending Martin Lane. And again, Friday, November fifteenth, from nine A M. to the thirty P M. Saturday, November sixteenth, to nine A M. to four-thirty P M. And Sunday, November seventeenth, from one A M. to four P M. Obviously, we'd like to remind people that the city and the United States Marine Corps Reserves are collecting Toys for, Toys for Tots program. Residents may deliver new unused toys and drugs. There's at boxes here at city hall or at the library. Toy donations will be accepted through November, and that goes until December sixth. And then obviously outside of city hall, City Stank and Elgin Recycling are conducting the holiday light recycling program. The collection boxes are out here. They're already items in the box. But they will be outside of city hall until February fourteenth. And just a reminder that lights that are actually accepted are winning lights, or Italian lights, the seven lights, the nine lights, rope lights, and V lights, and all these kind of things. All colors and lengths are accepted, and you should always remember that when a box gets filled, they actually, Elgin Recycling does take care of it. So, it's never to the point that they're too overflowing. And we do want to remind people, please take any garland or live greens or weeds off those, because those are non-recyclable. Coming up, we'd like to remind people that city hall and public works will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-eighth, and Friday, November twenty-ninth, and observance about Thanksgiving and holiday. Refugees collection will be delayed, so Thursday rights, Thursday routes will be collected on Friday. Friday routes will be collected on Saturday. We also want to make sure that people know the week of November twenty-fifth is the final week of yard waste collection. Yard waste collection ends on Saturday, November thirtieth. We do want to remind people that new for this year, the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce will bring Santa Claus to the Rolling Meadows Shopping Center on Sunday, December first, from eleven A M. to two-thirty P M. From eleven to twelve-thirty, they will be at the Hallmark. From one to two-thirty, they will be at Rep's Place. We do ask people to bring a non-recyclable food item, and you can have your photo with Santa. Any of the food that's collected at this event on December first will actually be given to the Rolling Meadows Police Department for their event that happens the week later. And regarding that, the last two items that we do want to mention is that the city will be conducting its annual tree lighting event on Thursday, December fifth. It starts promptly at six P M. Santa will be making his appearance at the tree outside of the historical museum at thirty-one hundred Central Road. Then please join the city for a spaghetti dinner while supplies last at Willow Bend Elementary School at forty-seven hundred Barker. Please come and enjoy the event, and actually, from the museum to Willow Bend, you would have a nice walk on the sidewalk. The, the C E F is trying to decorate luminaries and some other items. Or we will have the horse carriage there, but actually, hundreds of people cannot be on the horse. But you can always take, it's the same carriage. It's enclosed. You know, sorry, no reindeer. They were on loan somewhere else. And then obviously, on Saturday, December seventh, the Rolling Meadows Police Department will be conducting its food drive. And this will be outside of the Jewel Osko Food at three thousand Kerchoff Road. It's from ten A M. to two P M. And Chief Nowacki will have his dog Penny there again. She will have her holiday cheer on and sweater. So, for those, those are community events coming up.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. That brings us on to the third quarter financials. Ms. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your council packet and online are the third quarter financial statements for operations through September thirtieth, twenty-nineteen, which represents about seventy-five percent of the year. The report does have a lot of pages. I'm just going to summarize. The memo does consist of a detailed income statement with a lot of notes on it. We have detailed report for expenditures and revenues for the general fund, and major revenue charts as well. We have transfers completed for the nineteen budget. We have an all funds income statement, so you can see revenues and expenses all in for the year to date for September thirtieth, and also a cash and investments report as well. So, I'm just going to highlight some items in the memo itself. For the general fund, as of Ju- September thirtieth, all revenues in are totaling twenty-eight million, twenty-eight point five million, or eighty-four percent of the budget year to date. And expenditures are coming in all in at twenty-eight million for the year to date, about eighty-six percent of the budget. So, right now, we're at, we are a little bit above our estimates for the year of a hundred ninety-five thousand, year to date for the surplus through September thirtieth. The reason for that primarily is the fact that we do receive our property tax installments, and the first and second have been received. And so, we're about a hundred percent, almost at the levy received year to date. We are monitoring all of the effects, or any of the effects, from the state of Illinois. In particular, one of those items are the sales tax administrative fees that we, about a one-point-five percent, that's actually taken back from the state of Illinois. That is something we're monitoring, should there be any additional administrative fees that happen from the state of Illinois. But we're also monitoring any other kinds of revenue changes through, throughout the state in their changes for their budget. On the second page of the memo, we do have a chart which shows you year-over-year actual to actual. So, twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, major revenues for the general fund. It's good to take a look back to see the change, what we're observing. Through those changes are some, as we mentioned with state sales tax and home world sales tax, those administrative fees are showing an impact to those revenues. So, we're seeing decreases for sales tax. We're also seeing just some overall decreases in sales tax. It's important to note that because we're, we're making sure that we're on track as much as possible, but we are seeing some declines. Telecommunications taxes, we know, has been declining with the fewer landmines. Electric utility tax is slightly down year-over-year. Hotel tax, we planned for that. We knew that that would happen this year with one hotel offline. Food and beverage is slightly down year-over-year. And real estate transfer tax, of course, those are one-time unanticipated revenues. We do not know of, but again, we're just doing the comparison. Local use tax, interestingly enough, is related to those internet sales tax that we receive, so we do see increases there. And income tax, year-over-year, is increased. So, we're, we're monitoring those items, and I think it's important to show the trend line year-over-year. That's just the major revenues, and we do have some charts in the packet as well for you. We do note, again, expenditures are on track to budget, a little bit higher, only because of the fact that we are receiving our property taxes. And so, when we do that, we also show an expense within the police and fire and other line items for the pension expenditures. And then there's some detailed notes on the expenses for the general fund, so you can see some of the, the year-to-date trends there. We footnote in the memo the two budget amendments we've had for the year. Moving on to the utilities fund, right now, when you look at that all in for the revenues, you'll see that's slightly higher only because of the fact that we did receive our bond proceeds for our capital projects. And our revenue, our expenditures are tracking just slightly lower, and that's just because we're completing those capital projects. Some of that would also be capital construction in progress that are, happened throughout the year, all the way until next year as well. So, you'll see a little bit of change as we pay invoices through the year end. Another, one of our major operating funds, of course, the refuse fund, we just mentioned that as well, just to show you that revenues are fairly stable and in line with expenditures. And moving also, cash and investments through September thirtieth show forty-three point seven million across all funds. That does include the bond proceeds that are securely invested with P M A investments. And the general fund shows eleven point seven million year-to-date through September thirtieth. Just as a footnote too, P M A investments does complete our bond proceeds tracking and all of our I R S requirements and arbitrage calculations and tracking. So, that's all documented within the financials. If you have to answer any questions, if there are any.
Thank you. That's some very interesting observations, and appreciate the graphics. Manager Crumstock, we're going to.
Could I have a question? Oh, Mr. Mayor, could I have a question? She just asked if there were some questions. May I have a question?
Yes, you may have a question.
I was wondering if you could highlight for us what we're pulling in, in the gas, the natural gas tax?
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. So, we're right in line in estimates, year-to-date, so we're about five hundred thousand at that one percent through September thirtieth.
And what are we expecting for the whole year there?
About five hundred thousand. So, by the year end, it'll be a little bit uptick there because of the colder months.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Manager Crumstock?
Make this really quick. You have the twenty-twenty schedule for you. What I would bring your attention to is that December, we do expedite the schedule from not just the second and fourth Tuesday, but it's the first and third, third Tuesday of the month. But the rest of it is before you.
Wonderful, thank you. That brings us on to November nineteen, twenty nineteen. Can we do the whole draft agenda?
So, we have a committee of the whole, and we have our annual comm ed report. That's for the white papers. They do need to go to every municipality, and this is time for Joe Turnish to be back. Next one will be the recreational marijuana discussion. Obviously, we had a discussion some time ago, but it did pass the planning and zoning commission with positive recommendations. Before you see the first reading of the organs on November twenty-sixth, we just wanted to bring that back. And again, it does follow the. And again, it does follow the medical marijuana procedures and policies that we have in place at this point in time. Then we have one more discussion about the 2020 budget. We have the rental license survey results that comes through public works. And then the Donagate easement acquisition discussion that we would like to have. So those are the five items that are scheduled.
Wonderful. How about for the city council draft agenda?
So we do have November 26th before you and obviously there's some, two postponements that will be on here too. But nothing to really highlight other than what I did mention is that the recreational marijuana will have first readings. And actually, what I would bring people's attention to is the consent ordinances. We do have two of them regarding Leaky Cag, that's a micro boot that actually in our M1 manufacturing district. And so there, we might have Crawler's and Rower's out. And then we do have two items that deal with the recreational marijuana discussion. So other than that, we do have obviously the approval of the acceptance of the library budget, adoption of the city budget. And then obviously, we have a long list of items that are coming up at the mayor's appointment for our three reappointments to the library that will be on this meeting. And then obviously, our holiday list of staff reports.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. That would now pull us into that time where there, if there are any matters not on the agenda. Alderman O'Brien?
Sure, I just have the three, but I promise you they're quick. First one, regrettably, I know it's not being recorded or broadcasted tonight, but a handful of residents reached out to me. I reached out to Manager Crumstock and Chief Nowacki regarding about a send-off for the football team this weekend going to the quarterfinals. So it is just, please help get word out, I know city staff's going to put it on the scrolling message board if it's not there already, about they're possibly doing a send-off, they're just asking everybody that's going to be there in addition to the craft fair to help send the team off. Anytime around 11 o'clock on Saturday, if in the area to swing on by, to wish the team well as they go to play Wheatmoreville South. Second one, again, worked closely with Chief Nowacki on this over the last couple of months and also my time on the park district board. I know it's super tough to enforce about dog and the leash law. Is received a letter that I shared with staff from a resident, regrettably, two of her dogs were attacked. And a dog that came off vet bills and all that type of stuff. The pets were okay, probably more traumatized than anything else. So a very well-written letter, they did highlight some of the ordinances. They were wondering if we could possibly take a look at them or discuss them in the future to committee the whole. And I said, absolutely, I can bring it to the council. But I do understand from the years on the park district board and talking to the chief, the enforcement, it's really tough. So it's also a public service announcement. If you have a dog, please try to keep on the leash. Or if it's on, this one happened to be on the front yard, on the porch, was not leashed and just took off when it saw the other dog. So it wasn't even in a fenced yard or anything. So just if you have your dog out to the residents, please make sure you've got on the leash. And then third, certainly not last but not least, is I know last meeting was certainly an anomaly. I think we all had residents reach out to us just based on the council interactions. And I just, do you want to say, I'm not looking for a discussion or anything like that, is I think a lot of it, and I certainly respect Mayor Gall's position. I'm happy to sit anywhere. We're entrusted by the residents being put in these positions. I'm happy to sit any place if that will be an improvement. I'm completely on board with that, but I think it may lie deeper than that. They would just ask, a lot of the residents have reached out, it was about eight in total, two emails and I think six grabbed me like they did others, I'm sure. Is it just was kind of the banter and the bickering back and forth? So they just asked if we could be more professional. I'm passing on that, I think the same thing, we're all here with the huge amount of responsibility and trust the residents have entrusted us with. So that we continue doing that moving forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to bring forth something I would ask people to vote on tonight before we leave. We all got a document from Barry on our desk about the appraisals that I've been asking for, for many months. And I was wondering, since it's under the $10,000 limit, Barry would, could actually do without our permission, really?
He could, but he didn't.
I know, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just saying could, I didn't say you did. So I just, I would ask that we would move, are you bidding, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd just like to move forward and we were told originally that those can be $5,000 or $10,000 per property. We got a bid in for less than 4,000 for all five. So it's really a good price. It's still going to take three weeks to the turnaround. It'd really be nice if we could approve this tonight. That way we could probably get these properties on the market by the first of the year. So I'm asking for support of this tonight. Thank you.
Because it's a matter not on the agenda, the city council cannot vote on it. You can discuss the matter that's not on the agenda, but you'd have to include it on the agenda in order to take action.
And what we're just trying is to, just for clarification, just click the motion on the table so I get a head nods and then I would come back. Because again, this is not a budgeted item. So when the auditors ask why I went out for something that could potentially be used for a sale of property, they're going to ask, what gave you the authority? So this just gives me documentation that the council knew that I was using $4,000. And again, it is correct, it's under the 10,000, but we are going to potentially using these appraisals at a later date. So again, the auditors want to make sure that I just was not getting appraisal just for the heck of it, that there was head nods. And that's what this is really trying to do.
So with a roll call vote?
I'm sorry.
One minute. With a roll call vote, you're requesting that council members provide their approval.
Yes.
Manager Crumstock?
Yes, sir.
To move forward.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Or it would be a consensus of the city council.
Because all that's going to be used is the minutes of this night to show them, here was the authority and the council knew that I was using. So then with that, I would do it gains and gains.
Right.
For consensus, then I'm not going to do a roll call vote.
Alderman Sunoika, you have your hand up.
Yes, could either city staff or Alderman Cannon provide a little bit more context? This is the first time I'm seeing this memo tonight.
So going back to, excuse me, Fred was so July-ish. When we had the discussion about certain city property that was going to be potentially called surplus. And then we've also had a discussion in a closed session about certain pieces of property. So it took some time to get people to give us appropriate, pretty rules and the other things. But there's five locations that the city is looking at getting appraisals for. And by state law, we have to get a certified appraisal on any of the pieces that are going to be out on the market to sell them. For instance, not getting all five, but the Fire Station 15, which is in the downtown, will become surplus in December, obviously, when they move into the Algonquin. Another piece of property has been vacant for a long time, it's right by a bank. And we've tried as a staff to sell it in, and there have been no vibes. So you need the appraisals to be done. And obviously, we went out numerous locations, numerous requests. And then finally, from what we've received, we have five different appraisal firms. And obviously, the ranges is quite diverse, but it all depends on what you're looking for and what they actually do. So a company by the name of Bonafide Appraisals and Consultants is less than $4,000, which is just amazing that you can get five properties done at that for what we need and how it has to be done. And their turnaround is for three weeks to be done. So once we have the appraisals, then we go back to the city council. And that will be the next discussion about using potentially any firm to actually market this. But then there's some other resolutions and there's some other pieces that go on in it. But the appraisals aren't needed no matter what. And then added into the state code, which talks about who does the appraisals and when we do receive documentation, obviously, this is going to be sold. But at no event will the price be less than 80% of the appraised value. So that's a snapshot of what this memo is.
Thank you. I've been open the floor, if anyone else has a question or discussion before, I ask all those in favor to provide the city manager with the authority. So all those in favor, Alderman Sunoika proceed.
So, Manager Crumstock, would any of these prices change between now and the 26th?
Probably not, but at the same point in time, the longer we get into getting the information out, there's a potential that it could not be to you guys in December. And then it waits until January. This way, if we have the appraisal, then we can have the discussion about keeping this moving along and making sure that we have it.
I understand. The only reason is because, so in this memo, it's stating that the city has not used this particular appraisal or appraiser before. And not every appraiser is the same. They are all going to perhaps give different properties. It's not an exact science. So I would be more comfortable looking into these companies a little bit more before.
So I can tell you that the two highest ones we've used in the past are that attorney's firm has used in the past. Everything that I've been able to look at, the five that are in front of you, their backgrounds come back, their references come back. So they've been positive. And the bona fide that we're talking about, we've never used them, but everything looks just like how we do our due diligence with anybody. It looks good. He's actually an individual, the principal, he actually does court cases. And he has a lot of outstanding clients that he's used and there's some other spot firms that use him too. Flat out, when I asked, why is your price so reasonable? You know, he is looking for other businesses, he doesn't do a lot in municipalities. So he's looking at this as a new venture for him. And, but everything that I've been able to see about him and his background and his firm, it's been very positive.
Thank you. So I had one item on the agenda, which was to follow up with you, Alderman Cannon, on the 22nd. We're developing a plan, getting quick and early feedback on this property.
Thank you.
And I see that we have one mechanism, which is receive a document when you walk in. And if matters on the agenda, just request that we dive in and give approval. Though it's benign in its context this evening to get general consensus, I would appreciate a different mechanism than this to develop quick and timely responses for real estate. So with that, all those in favor of allowing city manager consensus to proceed, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So the ayes have it. Manager Crumstock, you have your consensus to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Further matters not on the agenda? Alderman Diastis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the December committee of the whole meeting, I'd like the conversation to be placed on council seating.
Further matters not on the agenda? Alderman Beniziano?
So last week, I had hosted an event at St. Colette with two of our paramedics to do a CPR class. And we hosted about 20, 20 people, some school teachers, some coaches. And we got 20 people CPR certified. So a great shout-out to chief and our paramedics, they did an amazing job. So I was very interested in knowing and finding out that this is something that we offer quite often, once a month, from my understanding, that residents can go and get CPR certified through our paramedics. So I strongly encourage our residents to do that. They were great instructors. It was an amazing experience. I take a different course personally, but it was a great refresher course. And all 20 people came out learning everything they needed to know.
Thank you.
So thanks.
That's a wonderful way to end positivity if there's nothing further than petty. Any other matters not on the agenda? Alderman Sunoika?
Thank you very much. I had Bob Johnson, who's the president of the Creekside Homeowners Association, reach out and ask about potential resurfacing for Crestwood and determining whether or not that would be something that could be placed on either the 2020 or 2021 capital improvements schedule.
How's that sound? Initial response, just so I can keep it in mind.
I'll have to look at our current five-year program. I believe it's in it. For some reason, I feel like I've answered this question recently and I cannot remember the exact information, so I would have to get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further matters not on the agenda? Seeing done, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? So, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cannon? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.